Okay, good afternoon. Before we begin the formal meeting, we will have public testimony on items that are not on the agenda. The people who come up and speak will have three minutes to speak. Watch the lights here, the green light here went to yellow to wrap up your comments so you can finish up before the buzzer goes off and then allow time for the next person to speak. And then we will also have it at the end of the meeting if there are other people who did not get a chance to speak. So I'll call up the following people. Francine Maxwell, Coral Taylor, Citizen, and David Page. You can come up and speak in any order among those four people.
Good afternoon. My name is Francine Maxwell, and I'd like to just touch base as we're coming to a close for this particular school year and as we go through the summer break and begin the new, that we be mindful of the quality education initiative in every neighborhood. And I've been speaking about Morris High School for over two years, and my senior VP has witnessed some of the things that I've asked this board to direct the superintendent to do an audit or an investigation on when he's doing his classroom visits. He will walk into a classroom where there's not a credentialed teacher. There's a TA that's teaching my children, and my children are being robbed that day because the teacher will walk into the front office, she will sign in, she will leave through the back gate. So that teacher is not using their sick leave, they're not calling in to get me a sub, so my children consequently are thinking that they're not worthy. They're not worthy to have a credentialed teacher that this school district has promised them. And so my children begin to not perform because no one has taken the time to notice that for two years this same person has continually gotten away. We have some fabulous world-class teachers that are there every day, working hard, educating our children in this urban community, but there's some people that are taking some liberties. And as a senior VP who was also in charge of 2011-2012 of hiring, he hired too many teachers on that campus. So I would like the board to direct in a request that the superintendent find out what is the actual count. Years ago, the district would send people over there to count children physically so that you could account for why are there so many teachers at Morris High School. I would also like the board trustee, as we continue to move forward, to think about looking at the job classifications at Morris High School. We have a lot of people that are in positions that never interviewed. A lot of our jobs at Morris High School were never posted because we had some administrators that didn't really know what they were supposed to do properly, which is post a job and let everybody apply. So a lot of friends were moved into some positions that aren't really necessary at Morris High School, and so we could save and we could put more money in the classroom. So I'd just like to, you know, say that we've made some fabulous drive under the current board trustee's leadership, under Mr. Koba's leadership and his leadership team, but we need to take another giant step as we get ready for 12-13 school year in this budget crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell, and we'll refer this on the superintendent. Please, thank you for not using names, but please pass on any specific information you have to the superintendent.
Oh, okay. No problem.
Thank you.
At the Audit Committee meeting yesterday, there was discussion of the ASB accounts. Several of these schools were audited, and one of the results was that eight of 10 cash receipts have no documentation. At another school, eight of 15 cash receipts, no documentation. Students don't know the amount of money that they have in their ASB accounts. Tens of thousands of dollars are continually rolling over and rolling over in CD accounts that the students never approved. It's been going on for years, and the students do not know. So they're at school continually raising money and continually raising money and being told there's no money, and yet their accounts reflect $150,000, $180,000. I asked somebody, "Why do you have that?" For emergencies. Well, I think this would be the time that it's an emergency. ASB advisors do not know the laws regarding ASB. Principals are using ASB accounts as slush funds. The ASB audit is not a formal part of the final audit, but it should be. That was part of the discussion at the audit meeting, whether it should be included as part of the formal report. Of course, it should be. There is a lot of mismanagement in those accounts that I'm seeing, and it's very distressing to know that students would spend the whole year raising money when they had $150,000. And still, the students are being asked to pay $35 to have their senior portraits taken because the school needs the money. But when you look at the accounts, there are tens of thousands of dollars. I'm very concerned that there is not adequate oversight about those ASB funds and that the students who spent the money, when whatever fundraisers they contributed to in that year, did not benefit from the money that they raised.
David Page, Chair of the District Advisory Council for Compensatory Education. I'm also speaking on behalf of some other parents who are advisory council chairs who met with the superintendent yesterday and had an opportunity to share our needs for communication and advanced communication. So we're thankful for that opportunity with the superintendent, but I wanted to pass on some things that are actually under your control. I think I've been here before to ask that this body comply with its bylaws that notify people who request information regarding what agenda items are going to be available sometimes as much as nine days in advance, but at least seven days in advance, which is what your bylaws read. The advisory council chairs would appreciate that lead time, even if there's not clear defined documents to go with that, to know what's going to be discussed. So for instance, today, when the consolidated application comes up, put under the consent agenda, which means it's a usual and customary function, it's actually Connet Part One that was due June 30 last year. And so we feel that these kinds of problems could be addressed privately with district staff, let them know, "Hey, what are you thinking?" Things like public hearings that are required could be handled in a better manner if we're able to help advise district staff that are inept at making sure things have proper hearings as required by law. So one thing that you could do would be to advise your council chairpersons in advance what you have planned to have on an agenda, and just call a draft, and if it doesn't come up, that's fine, but at least give us a heads up so that we can determine if we should have included our bodies in those items, or that we should actually be able to type an email to board members and staff to have a conversation before this opportunity so that before you've had to make up your mind, you actually receive that input when it's been too short of notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Coral Taylor. I'm a recent graduate of Lincoln High School, and as I depart to Bennett College in Greensboro, North Carolina, I'd like the board to keep in mind the students of Lincoln High School. Lincoln High School still needs two more salad bars to ensure that every student is offered a healthier choice. Lincoln is trying to build a healthier culture on campus, and one salad bar isn't enough. I would also like the board to consider purchasing fresh fruits and vegetables from the People's Produce Market. Lastly, I would like the board to think about the Hornets by assisting them in developing a language department so the students of Lincoln High School are able to complete on a global scale. And if I were to pick the next language, it would be Mandarin or Tagala. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Okay, at this point, will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast to the June 28, 2012 regular meeting of the Board of Education with members Jackson, Barrera, Evans, and Beiser present, and with trustee Scott Barnett absent. I just want to say one comment today here, too. This is a very different day that we are coming here today on June 28. It's one day after June 27 when the San Diego Education Association overwhelmingly approved the agreement with the San Unified School District to keep about 1,500 educators on our staff for next year, to run our schools, to keep our class sizes small, to have music programs, arts programs, career technical programs, and so forth. This was passed overwhelmingly by the teachers, counselors, and nurses, and we all owe them a debt of gratitude. We're going to be talking about a lot of specific business tonight, but they have really made a huge difference in terms of us preparing for a wonderful 2012-13 school year. So once again, we want to extend our extreme appreciation to them. Now, if you wish to address the board today, please pick up a slip over at this table and turn it in to Ms. Vierato, who is here to my right. We will call you to speak when your particular agenda item is called, and then if someone wants to speak on a non-agenda item, they will be called at the end of the meeting. Okay, we'll start today with administrative assignments and the superintendent's information report.
Thank you, President Evans. For appointments, I have the following to notify community staff and board members. Milton Martin to Vice Principal Hickman Elementary School. Mary Waldron to Director English Learner Support. Veronica Lopez Mendez to Program Manager Bilinguism and English Learner Support. And Ruben Littlejohn to Chief of Police, District Police. And one other note, we have our long-awaited Director of Real Estate in the audience, Tina Vichelli. Raise your hand, Tina. We are expecting big things from her on our strategic property management, and I wanted a guarantee to the board that she was here. Now, if I could, move on to my superintendent comments. First and foremost, I would like to read a letter of appreciation and thank you to the volunteers, and that's across the board, whether they be parents in our schools, community members, business partners, military, adopt a school support. This idea is long overdue, and I want to give credit to Amy Redding, one of our active volunteers in the school staff, for her thoughts on it, and to Linda Zince for doing the fine wordsmithship on it. But it reads like this. Dear volunteers, on behalf of the San Diego Unified School District's students and staff, I want to thank you for sharing your time, talents, and energy during the 2011-12 school year. Volunteers are the backbone of our school communities, and the work you do, especially during these most difficult economic times, has a direct and constructive influence on the quality of education provided to our students. Whether you are a parent or community member, serve as a mentor or tutor, a student, sit on a board advisory committee or site council, provide transportation or chaperone for field trips, present an orientation or job shadowing experience, participate in your cluster council or join the PTA, paint a wall or plant a school garden, or all of the above, you help to provide the resources our students deserve to succeed in school and in life. Through your support and caring, our students are rewarded academically and personally. The investment of your time and effort provides immeasurable benefits to our children now and in their future. The goal of the district's strategic process is to create quality schools in every neighborhood. One of the key indicators of a quality school is strong parent and community engagement around student achievement. A robust volunteer program is a critical factor in the achievement of that goal. Our staff understands that volunteers are important to the success of our students. Together, we can build a partnership that will ensure our students meet all standards and graduation requirements. Volunteers really do make a difference. I hope your experience with the district has been positive and fulfilling, and that you will continue to volunteer in whatever capacity you can. Please realize that the value of your volunteer work is based not only on the necessary duties you perform, but also on the behavior you model for students. Your willingness to share your time and energy demonstrates to our students the importance of education, and your words, actions, and attitudes demonstrate positive ways of working with others and handling the situations that arise. Again, thank you for your time and efforts. I wish you a wonderful summer and look forward to working together in the 2012-13 school year. And while this is a simple thank you, behind it is my recognition, I think, of the board and the staff of the thousands and thousands of hours and the number of behind-the-scenes efforts by any number of adults that have helped to make a difference in our school year in these difficult times. So thank you, and we're going to post this in the Friday notes as well. Some other things that I want to share with the board and the community. We had our most recent monthly strategic retreat, which is composed of both the cabinet and the area superintendents coming together with the Panasonic Foundation to continue to develop and refine our strategic process. We are now doing, as the board had directed, and that's building the implementation phase and the oversight that will go with that. We have also worked with AASD. Recently, we had a budget review with them so that we could update them on the various funding issues and answer any of their questions. That's a part of working with all of our stakeholder groups, and there's more to follow on that. And then just this past Tuesday, the Board of Directors of San Diego LGBT Pride selected and recognized San Diego Unified School District to receive the prestigious Spirit of Stonewall Award as part of this year's pride celebration. It recognizes the outstanding members of the community who are working hard to preserve gains and to meet the challenges of securing equal rights for the LGBT community. Trustee Kevin Beiser graciously received the recognition, and there are a number of other events over the month of July where they recognize the contributions of various individuals, community members, and in our case, an organization. So it was much appreciated for what Safe Schools Task Force and other community and staff members have done. And the last thing I want to bring up is that yesterday, we had a press conference where Dr. Evans talked about, along with additional comments from Dr. Meyer, about very, very positive news. The fact that the recent 2010-11 cohort graduation and dropout rates were announced statewide and here locally for the county as well. San Diego Unified proudly was recognized for being the large urban of the nine or 10 that we compare ourselves to, including Long Beach, LA, Fresno, and so on, to have the lowest dropout rate among that group and the second highest graduation rate. And I think that is testimony to the staff at all levels in the district, kids, clearly the students across the district, and to the parents that support and facilitate home. And all that coming together is the result of a successful set of academic indicators. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Let's move on to board reports. Mr. Beiser?
Yeah, as the superintendent had mentioned, it was a great honor to receive on behalf of the Safe Schools Task Force the Stonewall Service Award. This is in the Pride, America's Pride San Diego program on page 25. And the Safe Schools Task Force isn't any one person, but it's comprised of several organizations, including Gleason, PFLAG, Anti-Defamation League, folks at the center, Dr. Dolores Jacobs, and a variety of other members of the community, counselors, teachers, PTA representatives from Chris Kejo's office and Tony Atkins' office. So this is really an award that recognizes when a community comes together to try to improve the safety for all of our children in the schools, because when we have bullying and students are worrying about those kinds of things, then it's harder for them to focus on what's important, and that's learning and academic performance. So I was, you know, very honored to receive the Stonewall Service Award on behalf of all of the partners and stakeholders involved in the Safe Schools Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beiser. Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I had the pleasure yesterday of attending a groundbreaking at our project at 22nd and Commercial Streets. It's a project long in development that I know Ms. Jackson has been championing your entire time on the board. This is a property that's our old book depository building that's been sitting vacant for a number of years, and, you know, a lot of conversations that we're having these days about what to do with excess property. We've got our new real estate person on board. I hope that the 22nd and Commercial project can set an example for what we can be doing because what's happening now is through a partnership with the city, and we had Councilman Alvarez and Mayor Sanders there, the MAC Project Bridge Housing, that formerly vacant property is being converted into affordable housing, both rental and for sale for families, including many of the kids who attend our schools. Affordable housing for seniors, including the grandparents of many of the kids who attend our schools. Some commercial development that's going to create jobs in the neighborhood. So this is a project that's going to make life better for our kids, and it's, again, part of what we've been trying to do here, to break down the walls between what happens to a kid at school versus what happens, you know, in the rest of the lives of our students, because those walls don't exist in reality for our kids. We, as a school district, need to make sure that we're not setting up these artificial boundaries, and so being able to work in partnership with those entities to help revitalize the neighborhood is very exciting. And then I also had the pleasure of attending Garfield Elementary School's reclassification ceremony. It's kind of a, it sounds a bit intimidating of a word. What it basically means is students who have been classified as English learners have graduated and are now, you know, recognized for their proficiency in English. And these students were amazing. Many of them read speeches that they had written about the work that they've done to become proficient in English while retaining their native language. And so this is a whole group of new leaders for San Diego, for our community, that had a celebration yesterday at Garfield Elementary School.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Well, I think I was about ready to pass, and I think I will pass. Thank you.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just want, we talked about, I talked earlier about the historic deal that was made between the district and the Education Association, and I just want to express my appreciation to all of the people on both teams who worked day and night to make this deal that a lot of people said would never happen. Some of the teachers who were there, Ron, Lindsey Berningham, David Irving, Gary Edmonds, Terry Pesta, and also on the district side, all the people from the staff who are working there. And all we really wanted all year was to have both sides sit down, talk, and look at the situation, and what became very clear was that everybody really wanted the same thing, which was to protect and improve the education of the kids in San Diego. And that's how we were able to come up with a deal. And now, coming out of this, we're really going to be able to work together to save all of our schools and to really move forward in the coming years, working together. One of the things that's happened through the years is the state makes cuts to education, and then they just step back and let everybody at the local level start fighting with each other over a small amount of money. And now we are actually united and working together, and we're going to be pressuring very strongly in Sacramento to make sure we get our fair share, and we're going to be working together to make sure that the ballot initiative, particularly the governor's ballot initiative, passes in November. And it's really, our teachers have made a sacrifice, they have made an investment. I started to calculate the other day at one school how many hundreds of thousands of dollars the teachers were actually contributing in the next school year to their school through the concessions they made to keep all of our staff and to keep the schools open. And what we are asking of all the rest of us is really very little in comparison to what we asked of the teachers and the counselors and the nurses. It's a quarter cent sales tax. If you buy a book for $20, it will cost you 10 cents more. This is just a tiny amount that goes a long ways to protect the education of the kids all across the state of California. So this is a new chapter. We're going to be working together very closely. We've really appreciated the leadership of Bill Freeman, who's headed the San Diego Education Association, who's really going to work together with us to make sure that we have proper funding for education as we move forward. So now we'll move on to the business part of our agenda. A motion to adopt the agenda?
So moves?
Okay, please vote on the agenda. Okay, now we will go to the superintendent's consent agenda. Are there any items which board members want to poll?
Yes, items E18 and E23, and I just want to speak to those items later.
Okay, E18 and E23. And then we will, before we make a decision, let's go and listen to the public speakers on the, is that how we've been doing, is having the public speakers now? That's my thought. I'm getting confused. Okay. First of all, pardon me?
No.
Well, we need to listen to the speakers to see if we want to poll the items. See? Okay. Thank you for asking. Okay. First of all, on item E3, Citizen? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, I didn't look ahead. Thank you, Mr. Beiser. Okay, we have, Citizen will speak on E3, E18, E28, E29, and E42. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Please allow her one minute for each item. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
There needs to be more scrutiny over field trips. I was reviewing the field trips, and I looked up what Sunset Ranch Oasis in Mecca, California is. This is going to be paid with ASB funds, and it's a vacation resort where you can rent cabins for $695 a night, and I have some concerns about that. ASB money should be used for the entire student body, not just for a select group of people. That needs to be looked at. I'll hand this to you. And regarding the ICC, there are far too many courses being presented. A lot of things are added and nothing is deleted. I'm concerned about the poor monitoring, and also, we need to have some parents and some community members also serving on the ICC. Sweetwater School District is one of the school districts that has membership from the community on this very, very important committee. Having input about classes that are being proposed or deleted should have input from the community and students. We should have students on there as well. The ratification of multiple on loan agreements, I don't think that's in the benefit of the district to have that. I think that if people choose to move to a different district, then they choose to move to a different district. That just costs this district money. I think that those positions should open for people that want to continue to work at San Diego Unified. If they want to move on, then they should move on. The spending summary, there's insufficient information about where money is coming from and who is bringing it forth. I don't see information about the foundations and boosters and what they're bringing into the school district. I think that needs to be clear in the public documents. Regarding the swimming pool contract, it's not clear that the funds are going to be paid by the district. Last year, I saw that students were being charged for using the swimming pools, and their parents are having to pay, and that violates the constitutional right to free And, you want me to speak? Okay. And also, I think that the teacher's contract was too hastily put together. I think it's detrimental to the district, to classified staff, and to students. It needs to be negotiated to address many issues and not just pay. The district has an opportunity to right-size it so that it has adequate staffing in all areas, including custodial, clerical, and other necessary support services. The major issue is VIBA. VIBA's costing the district $1 million, and that money could have saved needed classified positions. I didn't see that in there. Insurance costs, even negotiating a higher copay needs to be considered so that the healthcare costs can be reined in. And I don't think that extending that contract for an extra year was for the benefit of the school district, which means the benefit of the children. I think it was very hastily considered, and please consider voting no.
Okay, thank you. So we have items E18 and E23. Is there a motion to be polled? Is there a motion to, or did you just want to speak to those briefly, Ms. Jackson?
Well, on E18, I can speak to it briefly. E18 is our curriculum, and so courses, and my concern there is that each time a school wants to bring forth a course, we add a number to it. And we should have a standard number for each course. An example that I would point out is that Roosevelt is now going to offer a Spanish class at middle school, and I'm sure that we have other middle schools offering a Spanish class. They all should have the same number and the same course. It shouldn't be each school gets to write their own course and get a different number. So I'm just asking the staff that they make a concerted effort to align our courses so that we don't have duplication of courses at different schools with different numbers. It's the same name, but it has a different number depending upon where you go. And the importance of that is with the Navient system and trying to upload the courses, they had to go out and use manually because even though the schools had similar courses, they had different numbers, and that would have really helped there as well. So I'll approve it, but I wanted the staff to stop working on consolidating those numbers.
And Dr. Meyer, do you want to say something about that?
No, I just want to say that I will take that back to our staff for discussion and standardization.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. And then, did you want to comment on item E23?
No, I will pull that one. I want to vote against that one totally.
Okay, but...
I want to approve all items except for E23.
Well, since we're right here, I mean, is there, can we have the discussion on E23, and we can finish up the consent agenda right now?
Oh, sure, you want to.
Oh, sure, you want to. Okay, E23 is our consolidated application, and that item really should have been under a different, it should have been under F, under the F item for student instructional matters, because it is such an important item to our district. But I just want to point out, the reason that I can't support it is that I'm not sure how much effort went into, on page 4 of 18 of this document, our district advisory committee and our DLEC refused to approve the, refused to approve it. So I'm not sure what the impact of this is, sending our, our application and having those community organizations not willing to approve this. So I will be voting against it, if you want to move it.
Okay.
I'll move the entire consent agenda.
Okay. Motion to approve the entire agenda, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, second. Okay.
You're going to pull item 23 out, or are you going to leave it in there?
I'm leaving it in.
Right. Okay, right. Okay. Any other comments? Then please vote on the entire agenda. Okay, and that passes 3-1. So now we will move on to the student instructional matters. And this is, item F1 is a public hearing and approval of the 2012-13 annual service and budget plans for local plans for special education.
So move.
Second.
I'm sorry.
All right.
My mistake. We will wait on that one until the end of the agenda. Okay. Item F2 then, API base, API report and review.
Our chief accountability officer, Ron Rhodey, wants to highlight some of the key API results.
Okay, so everybody's already received this report. If you could just kind of highlight the main things in language that the laypeople understand as we're talking about it.
Thank you, Dr. Evans, superintendent. So, first thing to point out with this report is that it's a little bit later this year than it has been in the past years. Typically, we had been getting this at the beginning of May the last couple of years, and it started out in March or February several years ago. One of the big things happening at the California Department of Education is they're merging a lot of their data systems now. So the accountability system is now being merged with the statewide student information system, and that's led to some delays in getting all of that to work together. So I just want to let you know that that's why this report is a little bit later than usual. So indeed, this API report does reflect results from the 2011 testing. So we don't want people to misunderstand that the testing we just completed for this year is not yet reflected in this report. This report sets the baseline by which we'll measure growth for the current school year. And also, just to make sure that people are aware, that the analysis of the performance of schools that went into these data was done last year in August and September. So we looked at how much growth there was last year. And this report, the main purpose of it is to, again, set growth targets for this year, but to also place schools in comparison to other schools in the state. So we'll look at those comparisons as we go through here. And also, just want to point out for everyone's information is that as the school scores have increased over the years, the decile ranks now have a different meaning. For example, for elementary schools in 2000, when we started this process, a school that received a score of 800, the state target, would have received an API rank, statewide rank of 8. So the third one from the top of the rankings. Today, or in 2011, an elementary school that gets a score of 800 will get an API rank score of 5. So as the performance of all schools rises, we're compressing the scores toward that 800 mark. And eventually, as we get all schools over 800, we're still going to have some schools that are getting decile ranks of 1 and 2. So there is recognition that this is becoming a problem, and there's discussion about perhaps changes to the ranking system as we move forward. So we have several pieces of information in this report. We're going to look at the actual base score, which is very similar to the growth score that came out in August or September of last year, but there's a little bit of tweaking of it because of some changes in the calculation method. The base score from 2011 must use the same methodology we're going to be using this fall to calculate the 2012 growth. And then we also have our statewide ranks, our similar schools ranks, our growth targets, and as we move forward. This chart simply looks at the base API scores of all of the large urbons, and as the superintendent noted earlier, it looks very similar in a way to the graduation rate data that came out yesterday, in that we see that San Diego is second amongst these large urbons, trailing only Garden Grove. So graduation rate seems to be very similar to the overall API scores.
So you're saying that's a silver medal?
Yes, I guess.
Good.
On a bronze.
And based on these API scores, as we mentioned, schools are put into different categories or decile ranks. So all elementary schools are compared against each other across the state. And simply, what happens is we take the top 10% of all elementary schools, put them in decile rank 10. The next 10% of schools goes into decile rank 9, et cetera, and that's how these scores are divvied up. And the different spans of scores for each of the ranks is, has differing magnitudes, for example. When you're at the middle of the scale, the ranks of 4, 5, and 6, you might only have 20 or 30 points within your rank, where, pardon me, if you're at the far ends of the scale, you could have 50 or 60 points. So you can jump a rank easier when you're in the middle of the distribution, rather than when you're at one of the ends of the distribution. And I just want to point that out because here we see that the numbers of schools that increase by 1, 2, or 3 decile ranks. And again, this, of course, reflects those high growths in API that we saw last fall. And here, just to highlight these schools that showed increases in their decile ranks, and again, this correlates very much to the growth scores that we examined last September. And two schools, as you can see, actually jumped 3 decile ranks, which is a fairly uncommon occurrence. And then also looking at schools that dropped by decile rank, and so this, of course, would have gotten a lot of attention from the area superintendents and the school principals last year. When they got their API growth scores, they would have started looking, why did our score drop? And then also, this, again, when we do those comparisons, reflects what happened with other schools in the state. So again, this is just reporting the comparisons of schools. And here we have, again, those schools that would have gone through this analysis, and will look to see what their analysis turned up and what changes they made, and to see what growth scores they'll be getting this year. And my last slide here is looking again at the distribution of our schools compared to the state, what we expect in the state. So the lowest 3 deciles in red here, we would expect statewide, that would be 30% of the schools. The middle 4 deciles would be 40%, and then the top 3 deciles would be another 30%. And as you can see here, our elementary schools are doing better than the state average, if you will. Our middle schools are also doing better as far as the distribution of schools earning those API ranks. And the issue here is with our high schools, where we have more of them in the lowest deciles. And we've pointed this out in the past, and it's a continuing effort to improve the achievement at our high schools. So that's our quick presentation of these API base scores, and we only have a couple of months now until we're going to get our API growth scores very soon.
Okay, Mr. Beiser?
Okay, so pretty much, this is just the decile rankings, right?
And the reports for the schools also gives them their growth targets that they need to meet.
For next year. Right, right. And then we received, I think, last week, an API result, the final API results for all the schools by school, right? So we could look at that, and we could say, okay, these are our 10 most struggling schools in terms, as reflected in their API score, and then try to, you know, work with those schools to develop action plans and to try to turn those schools around or continue to help them improve, right?
Again, the scores you received were the base scores, but again, they're based on the 2011 testing.
Right.
So that information was what the schools were reacting to last September. They already have that information, and so this isn't new information for them.
Right. So are we doing anything as a district to go out and visit those schools and have any kind of action plan meetings, or talk to them more about replicating best practices, or implementing new research-based strategies, or applying new and different technologies to try to break open and reach those kids that seem to be struggling, no matter, because, you know, this is something that I think is the, it's one thing to get the data, it's another thing to react and then use that data as a district, not just say, okay, here's your, here's your data, Mr. or Mrs. Principal and Area Super, good luck here, go do something. You know, I really think that we have got to make sure that we're continuing that. And I'm sure that we have a lot of very strong staff members in the central office that could do that, and to some extent, many of them probably already did. But I'm wondering, are we doing anything, a concerted effort, to identify that the bottom 10, or the bottom 20, or focus our energies on the high schools where it seems that we're really missing the boat, according to this data?
Certainly, that effort has under, or been underway with the area superintendents, and I would defer to Dr. Meyer to maybe elaborate on that if...
One of the first things we do is we have a site plan for every site, and the schools that are in particular trouble and have shown particular drops, like the ones that we're seeing on the data, we do work with them more intensely. We monitor their data, we monitor specific students, and we provide interventions according to their need. So some of the things that we've developed centrally include interventions according to the response to intervention model, where if a school has a lot of students who do not need support, they receive the typical instruction. And then for those where that does not work, we then go to the second level and give them more intense supports, different kinds of supports, and specific targeted instruction.
So the bottom 10 API schools will be implementing new support intervention plans next year?
Well, let me get to the end. The tier 3, which is the top tier of the particular response to intervention, has the more intense supports that are for students who repeatedly are struggling and need more and more. And so the top, the schools you're referring to, they would be those who receive more of that tier 3 type of intense service. And they receive it from a multitude of departments and work together and have a particular plan. We're also working forward to identify a sheet that will consolidate our departments and more of a structure that I think you're talking about, where our student services department, which includes counseling and nursing, our curriculum department, all weigh in on what kind of support, including the area superintendent team we can provide for particular schools. The site plan, we've had this conversation. It does designate targets, it does designate supports. It tends to still be too broad for the targeted support that schools need.
Right. And I do want to publicly thank Nellie Meyer and the staff. When I first got on the board a year and a half ago, I received site plans that were hundreds and hundreds of pages. Clearly, they just recycled the same site plan for the last 15 years or whatever. A lot of site plans were just cut-and-paste jobs to check the box that they have done it. And I really appreciate Nellie Meyer's complete revamping of site plans, and I'm sure that IT was involved in that and a lot of other people. So now, a lot of the site plans are much, much more compact, succinct, workable documents. So thank you for that work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rhodey.
Okay, I move items G1.
Okay, G1, the minutes moved. Second. Okay, please vote. Okay, 4-0. And now we're moving on to operational matters reserved for the board, and the first item we have is the District English Learner Advisory Committee. We're having bi-annual reports from our different committees, and so we're going to give them 10 to 15 minutes to kind of update us on what's going on there. So please introduce yourselves and go ahead.
Good evening to the Board of Supervisors. I am Nica Nora Montenegro, and I am the Vice Chair of the District English Learners Advisory Committee. Our Chair has a very important meeting in Las Vegas, so I am standing for her stead. And I have with me the other officers. I have here our liaison officers, Yasmin Bosson and Olivia Otchen, and also our parliamentarian, Luis Portillo Corona.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this. This is our report to the board. The other members are Berta Salazar Serna, the secretary, she couldn't make it today.
Okay, we need a clicker.
Oh, this one. Oh, I'm sorry. Is it the one?
Yep.
There, okay. Why do we have District English Learner Advisory? Each California school district with 51 or more English learners is required to form a DLEC, or the English Learner Advisory Committee. Our district has more than 35,000 English learners. So if 51 is required, we have 35,000 of that. The primary purpose of the DLEC is to promote collaborative outreach efforts that encourage the participation of parents of English learners in discussions about educational issues and opportunities, and by so doing, help assure the academic achievement of English learners, or our ELs. Each school site is entitled to one DLEC representative position. In order to vote, the representative must be a parent or guardian of a second language student. Approximately 100 schools are represented at its DLEC meeting. Our DELC's legal task: On at least an annual basis, the DLEC is expected to review and comment and/or advise on the items listed below. The district initiatives for English learners, programs and services for English learners, goals and objectives for English learners, written parent notification letters for parents of English learners, the annual language census, reclassification procedures, compliance with English learner teacher certification. There are three top DLEC priorities for school year 2011 to 2012. The first is to meet all of our legal requirements. Second, to widely disseminate information about the seal of bili literacy. And third, to work with the Office of Language Acquisition and Schools to increase the number of functional site English Learner Advisory Committees, or the ELCs. Our top priority one, to meet all the legal requirements. As of June 7, 2012, the DLEC has met all legal requirements for 2011 to 12. Our members have learned and shared information about the district's three program options for English learners, the expectations for English learners' progress in learning English and meeting grade-level standards, criteria for an English learner student to be reclassified as fluent English proficient, and how to work in collaboration with their schools to accelerate English learner student success. The district seal of bili literacy. This is an award granted to high school seniors upon graduation, which certifies academic proficiency in English and at least one other language. Qualifying students graduating in spring and summer of 2012 will be the Qualifying students graduating in spring and summer of 2012 will be the first to receive the seal, so this is the first. These students will have an embossed seal of bili literacy affixed to their diploma. This special recognition will appear on the students' transcripts, and most of all, earning the seal will advantage students throughout their college, career, and personal lives. Our top priority two, to disseminate information about the seal of bili literacy. The DILAC has made concerted effort to widely disseminate information about the seal of bili literacy. Actions include speaking in support of the seal at Board of Education meetings, so we spoke about this in your meetings, having a dedicated seal of bili literacy presentation at a DILAC general meeting, so that all the other parents and teachers and administrators who attend our DILAC meeting are informed about the seal of bili literacy, and providing multilingual versions of District Administrative Administration Circular Number 33 and applications for the seal to DILAC members, English learner support teachers, the English learner coordinators and counselors, and of course, assigning homework for DILAC members to spread the word to other parents. It is very important that everybody is informed about the seal of bili literacy. This is one way of encouraging our students to excel in another language aside from English. Our top priority is to work with the Office of Language Acquisition to increase the number of our ELACs, or the English Learner Advisory Committees, in every school. The English learner support teachers have been instrumental in increasing the number of functional, of fully functional, compliant, and meaningful ELACs. New English learner support teachers received ELAC training during the summer before the school year began. Then the new and veteran English learner support teachers received ongoing ELAC training, guidance, and support over the course of the school year. Our top priority three, it still includes, through the Office of the Language Acquisition, they conducted multiple ELAC trainings for the schools who do not have English support teachers. We still have some schools of that, although we feel so sorry about that. We feel that there should be an ELST in every school, because I think in every school, we have more than 51 English learners, but unfortunately, we still have some schools who do not have ELST, and all us trying to, you know, to conduct more trainings for the schools without ELST. The DILAC officers, and that's us, were also provided updates at their planning meetings, and at our planning meetings, we're always provided with updates, and our ELAC liaison officers have visited approximately 20 schools this year. Our board, I mean, our members of our board do not just sit down and do the planning. Aside from planning and discussing what are to be given, you know, information to be given to the members, we, even if I'm the Vice Chair and I only work after, you know, if the Chair is not present, we visit different schools, not only during the reclassification programs, but we visit schools to help them develop and, you know, group the parents, encourage parents to be active in the school and become, create the ELACs. There are 107 schools that currently have a functional ELAC. Isn't that a, I mean, isn't that an achievement?
Yes, sir.
I think we deserve an applause for that. 15 schools have properly delegated ELAC responsibilities to their school site councils so far, but only 15 schools. So there are about 107 functioning ELACs, and that's about 75%. We have about 21 ELACs that are in the process of organizing their ELACs, that's 15%, and we have 15 ELACs who voted to delegate that responsibility to their school council, and that's about 10% only. DILAC is happy to report that this year, this year, many top-level district leaders participated in our general meetings, and they have witnessed how great the meetings are, and they are, of course, our Superintendent Bill Kova, our Deputy Superintendent Nellie Meyer, Executive Director of Accountability Ron Road, all six area superintendents, and the Board of Education member Kevin Beiser. Thank you so much for supporting us, and thank you so much for visiting us and speaking in our general membership meetings. The DILAC officers participated too in several district-level work groups and committees, including the Bili Literacy Task Force, Latino Advisory Committee, and area cluster meetings. So thank you very much. DILAC will continue to host a variety of presenters to share valuable information with parents and community members. We strongly encourage each of you to attend at least one DILAC general meeting during the school year 2013, 2012 to 2013, because you are part of our success, and we are also part of your success. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay.
Is there any question? We're ready to answer.
Ms. Brer. Yeah, Ms. Montenegro, thank you for that presentation and for the work of the entire committee, and one issue that you want to take a little bit of credit for is that we had, I believe, several hundred students actually graduate this year with the seal of bili literacy. Is that correct? Do we have the exact number, Dr. Meyer?
Between 350 and 400.
Wow, between 350 and 400.
Wow. Yeah, the seal of bili literacy is another achievement, actually.
That's right.
And that's a big encouragement for our students.
Sure.
Yeah, and just one, one question on that. With the seal of bili literacy, was it, what languages were included? I know, certain, Spanish was, were there any other languages included? Does anybody know? Sure.
Students could qualify with any language other than English.
Right, and, and, right, and what languages did they qualify with this year?
I know there were Vietnamese, Italian, Spanish, of course, off the top of my head, I don't remember if there were others, but I feel very sure that there were.
And how do they, how do they qualify for, for the seal? Can you give me a little information on that, or don't remind?
We were informed in our DILAC meeting that to qualify for the seal of bili literacy, the high school students, there are requirements that has to be achieved.
And Ms. Montenegro mentioned Administrative Circular 33, that's been translated in many languages, and that's posted on the district website. All the requirements are there, and the application is included as well, so that'll give you detailed information about what is required.
Do you know, and this is just an offhand question, are there any native English speakers who have, who have earned the seal of bili literacy?
I feel certain that there are. I can't name them, to be honest with you, but I am very sure there are.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we're really trying to promote a multilingual student body, and we want everybody to be learning multiple languages.
I feel certain that's the case. I just didn't look at the details.
I think that's a good point, and as, as we go down probably another five to 10 years, I think we're going to see a lot more native English speakers because of the Chinese immersion school, the German immersion school, the Hebrew immersion school, and all the other, and the language academy with French and Spanish, so we're, I think we're going to see a lot more, you know, a variety of students take advantage of, and be able to earn that seal of bili literacy.
And I have one, one question. I mean, you talked a lot about the formation of the committees and the people meeting and so forth. I'm just curious, maybe a couple of examples are what some types of problems have been addressed, or ways that the committee has come up with to improve things. I mean, this is an advisory committee to help, help the district improve in English learners, and, and, and we obviously don't want people just to form a committee to say we have and meet to meet, or just to inform them a little bit, but I'm just curious if you can give any examples of, of topics that have come up and our problems that have been resolved, or opinions that have been given to the district? Do you have any examples of that?
I could list a few examples of things on which the committee has advised, and then if one of our officers would like to add to the example, I would invite her to do so. They were on the forefront of information about the seal of bili literacy. They really keep their ear to the ground and know what's going on. They brought that to our attention very early on and participate in committees for that. They have been, almost all of them have an English learner support teacher assigned to their school site, and they recognize the value of that position, and multiple years in a row, they have strongly encouraged the district to maintain that program and expand it to the extent possible. Another thing that they advised on very recently, we're trying to build bili literacy, strong as well as expand from the bottom up, and some of the elementary schools were having difficulty with the student-teacher ratio, with the teacher that's provided for a classroom, and some of the schools that were trying to grow their bili literacy program, it would have forced them to have combination grades all the way up if they were to add another grade. For example, if they had a K-1, 2 bili literacy program, there was community interest for expanding to grade three, but they didn't have the right number of students to qualify for a teacher. Our DILAC came with a suggestion that a supplemental over-formula teacher be provided to those particular schools in order to expand and increase and keep a solid bili literacy program. Those are three things that come to mind off the top of my head. Ladies, was there something else? Oh.
And, and also, we inform parents, because a lot of them, they don't even know that they got English learners, and by the time that is, they're going to graduate, it's too late. So we are being, working so hard on letting those students, who they don't even know they're English learners, to go talk to the counselors and check it out for those, for those who are very behind, that way they can make it up to graduate at the same time that the peer, the same classroom is graduating. We've been working very hard with that information as well.
Great, thank you very much. That's, that's great information about what you're doing, and some very good results. Thank you very much.
These ladies are hard workers, and we're so happy to see you at our meetings, so I want to reiterate what Ms. Montenegro said. We hope that you can come to at least one meeting next year. We hope you will be there, and I really believe I can say, those of you that have attended have enjoyed the meetings, am I right? All right. Thanks, these ladies.
And if you're not there, we're going to be here, that's for sure.
It's an invitation and a threat.
Maraming, maraming salamat po. Maraming salamat dahil kami inyong pinonlakan. Maraming salamat sa pakikinig ninyo sa aming report. Maraming salamat po.
Just, salamat po.
Um, we've had, we've had a lot of this.
I know, I just, I know.
We applaud the efforts of our staff and SDEA to come to an agreement, so I want to move items H2, 3, 4, and 5, because there's been work done to bring our district prepared for our budget, and a lot of work has been gone into it already, a lot of comments already, so I want to put those together and move them as one item.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve items H2 through H5, and, and just to make a couple of points about this, we're approving the, ratifying what the San Diego Education Association has already ratified in terms of the agreement that we have discussed, and, and it's also very important that the Education Association and the general public knows that we are really doing this as a team. The Superintendent and the Board of Education had already indicated in the past that we would take the same concessions as we were proposing to the employees. These, these smaller items here also point out that the Superintendent, General Counsel, and a lot of the other unrepresented employees, and particularly for people to understand that the executive staff of, of the San Diego Unified School District is also taking these concessions. I think it's very important that everybody be aware of that.
I just want to clarify, item H5, does that include the board members?
It, it does not, but we need to get that on the agenda, I guess, at some point.
Can we amend that to include the board members?
Uh, no.
Okay, we'll put on the next agenda. It's already been publicly stated and approved by the board that we were going to include those.
Right, understanding that the next pay period is the end of July, so I can get it in on before the end of the.
Okay, we will add that on for the board.
One thing, Mr. President, I need to do is distribute the information that I shared with you in closed session concerning the amendments to the confidential MOU.
John, we have speakers for H2.
So just for the, to publicize that.
Okay. Okay, we have some speakers on these items, and specifically, they are speaking to item H2, which is the agreement with San Diego Education Association. Let me just check and see if we have one more here. Yes. Okay. Sue Jiaquinta?
Uh, God, yes.
Then I will call somebody else. Yes, three minutes.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Kova and board members. My name is Sue Jiaquinta, my address is on file. I've been a teacher in this district for over 20 years. I hold four teaching credentials, a bilingual certification, a master's degree, an additional education which puts me at the top step of the salary schedule. One would think that I would be rewarded for this, but instead, those of us on the top step have been penalized for the last two years. We alone suffered pay cuts of over $4,400. I was on the SDEA Board of Directors during the last contract negotiations. I voted to give up over $2,000 a year in pay as a loan to the district, because I was promised that we would be paid back. Now that it's time to pay us back, our so-called union brothers and sisters have decided to let the district keep that money. Most other teachers didn't actually suffer an actual pay cut due to furlough days because they moved up a step on the pay scale, which offset their losses, but others of us were lied to, betrayed, and robbed. If you approve this new TA, not only won't we get that money back, you will be voting to continue to take over $2,200 per year from a small group of teachers, while everyone who was pink slip gets their jobs back, and almost everyone else sacrifices nothing due to the offset of moving up a step on the pay scale. In fact, most teachers will continue to receive us, to receive small pay raises. When I asked Bill Freeman why the bargaining team didn't suggest an equitable way for all of us to share the sacrifice, such as by freezing the salary schedule, I was told, quote, "Then we would never get the money back." So apparently, it's okay for a few of us to forfeit, over four years, $8,900 each, for the benefit of the children of San Diego and for the majority of teachers to lose nothing. I was told to hang in there and not despair, because if the governor's bill passes, I would receive a 1% raise for one year as a payback. That would mean that I only sacrifice $8,100, which is still over 10% of my annual salary. A sacrifice is something I choose to give up. I did not agree to this TA, but if it is approved, more pay will be taken from me without my permission. Because of the thousands of dollars involved under the California Penal Code, it fits the definition of grand larceny, which is a federal offense. Whether it's called stealing, cheating, sacrificing, or continuing furlough days, it is discrimination. It victimizes only some members of SDEA, and it is definitely not the right thing to do. Please don't vote for this TA without amending it. Don't become moral felons. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to other comments. Sandy Mattson, Rebecca Wade, and Riley Hansen, in any order.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Riley Hansen, and this is Rebecca Wade. We represent SOS, if you guys could stand up so everyone can see us. SOS stands for Save Our Schools. We are a student-led campaign composed of students from high schools across San Diego taking action for the future. We want the community to know that we are grateful to those teachers who have agreed to make sacrifices on our behalf.
We are committed to mobilizing public support for public education. We encourage the board to ratify the agreement made by our teachers. We are here today to say that we care, we are watching, and we will take action in support of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to personally thank all of you and for the board for coming to this meeting in the summer and taking a stand and really standing up for education. Your voice is very loudly heard here and is much appreciated and respected. And I talked about the teachers and this district staff and the board and so forth working together, but we have a much stronger coalition if we have all of our students on board too. So once again, thank you very much for your support. Mr. Brer.
Yeah, I just want to, I noticed Sandy Mattson had signed up, but it looks like she's not going to be able to be here tonight. Sandy is a parent at McKinley Elementary School, and we've got amazing stories in our schools throughout the district. McKinley is a particularly inspiring story, because several years ago, a group of parents and teachers at McKinley got together, and they'd been seeing that the percentage of people in the neighborhood who were attending the school was declining, to the point that the school was at risk of having to be closed, because there were too few students. And so they literally went out and knocked on doors in the neighborhood to encourage parents to come back to the neighborhood public school, come back to McKinley, and developed an international baccalaureate prep program that could feed into Roosevelt and feed into San Diego High School as a way of keeping people in the public education system who were otherwise choosing to leave. So McKinley is, and today, there's a waiting list at McKinley, you know, of parents who want to send their kids there for kindergarten. It's been an amazing success story. So I just wanted to read a letter that Sandy wrote, and it says, "On behalf of my daughter and all of her schoolmates, thank you to San Diego Unified School District teachers for sacrificing once again so that my daughter and her classmates will have smaller classes, nurses, and counselors in their schools, and a chance at a quality education. Your actions once again exemplify the best of our society, caring people willing to take money out of their own pockets to ensure that our kids will succeed in the future. I just hope the citizens of California remember your selfless act when it comes time in November for them to make the same choice." And I think that sentiment, we've heard it tonight from the students with Save Our Schools, and we're hearing it from parents and community members throughout San Diego. So again, I wanted to share that and add, of course, my personal thanks to the teachers for the sacrifice that they've made.
Okay, so what we will be voting on is approval of the agreement with the San Diego Education Association, as well as the other contracts of executive staff and nonrepresented in terms of making that also in line with the concessions that we have with the San Diego Education Association. So if there are no further comments, please vote. And that completes everything. It passes 4-0. We now have an agreement. I'd just like to ask the members of SOS, since you've taken the time to come out here on a summer day, if you would please just shout out your name and what school you're from, so we can kind of have an idea of who's here, starting on the first row and going back.
All at the same time?
Right. One by one. Start here in the front row. Yes.
I'm Gio Bonn, I'm a junior, and I go to La Jolla High School, and I'm going to be a senior.
Okay.
I'm Anna Coleman, I'm going to be a senior.
Sarah.
I'm Daniel Jones, Scripps Ranch, I'm a junior.
Scripps Ranch.
I'm Lisa, I'm a senior.
Sarah.
I'm Kate Foman, I'm from their high school, and I'm going to be a junior.
Sarah.
I'm Patrick Henry.
Okay.
I'm Alan Hall, I go to Patrick Henry as well.
Patrick Henry.
I'm Casey Appalos, I go to Patrick Henry High School.
Patrick Henry.
I'm Kelly Wright, I go to Patrick Henry High School, and I'm a junior.
Patrick Henry.
My name's Elisa, so I go to Patrick Henry, and I'm going to be a senior.
Okay.
Chance War, Patrick Henry, senior.
Mealy Fletcher, Patrick Henry, I'm going to be a sophomore.
Alex Kelly, Patrick Henry, I'm going to be a sophomore.
Andy Bellar, Patrick Henry, I'm going to be a junior.
Okay, right there. Next row, yeah.
Ronnie Vegan, I go to Kearney.
Okay, Kearney.
Duncan Moore, I go to Patrick Henry, I'm going to be a senior.
Patrick Henry.
Esa Michael, I go to Patrick Henry, I'm a junior.
Andrea Raro, Patrick Henry High School, I was here from Bobby, Patrick Henry, I will be a junior.
Okay.
I'm Anna, I'm a senior.
I'm Evan Wallace, I'm from Miramasa High School, and I'm going to be a junior.
Okay.
Joel Vado, I'm from Mar Vista, and I'm going to be a senior next year.
You can be a junior from Mar Vista, I'm going to be a senior next year.
Andrea Navas, Mar Vista, I'm going to be a senior.
Mar Vista.
Rebecca Wade, I go to Stair, I'll be a senior next year.
Go ahead.
Caitlin Luso, I'm from Patrick Henry, and I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Samo, I'm from Patrick Henry, I'm going to be a senior.
Jessica Halpoff, I'm Patrick Henry, I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Gilberti, from SCPA, and I'll be a senior.
Okay, SCPA.
And I'm Riley Hanson, I'm from Patrick Henry as well.
I didn't tell you, I go to Sarah High School, I'm a sophomore.
Sarah.
I'm John, I'm a senior.
Sarah.
I'm Sarah, I'm a senior.
Okay.
I'm Sarah, I'm a senior.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank all the students from Sarah, Patrick Henry, and Scripps Ranch. I'm proud to represent you guys on the board. Thank you for being here tonight.
As well as La Jolla, and Mar Vista, and SCPA--
SCPA, we represent all of you.
Yeah, we're all here. Okay, thank you very much. And Miramasa, Miramasa, I didn't say that. Okay, right. That was, okay. Okay. We'll give them a chance to, thanks a lot, guys. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, Superintendent, you're up with the budget?
Okay, we're going to go right now to item I1. Human Resources, no updates. Okay, public hearing and adoption of the 2012 district budget and resolution to certify fiscal solvency for the subsequent two years. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded?
Heard on last week.
Okay, we've gone over that. We had the full reading last week. If there's not any need for any further comments, let's please vote on, okay? It's a public hearing, and we will have the speaker. I was just getting a little too excited here. Okay, on item I2, we have a speaker by the name of Anne Marie Haney. In this vast audience.
I wouldn't want to spoil my record.
It's a beautiful record.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your record. Well, I really have to sneak in a little comparison between this wonderful article about lowering dropout rates and raising graduation rates, and all of this wonderful in the same newspaper that we read an article by Roger Hedgecock, who says, "We're having a terrible time with dropout rates." It's down here in this paragraph. And I think it would have been really good if he'd waited a day to write this article. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm glad we got the bigger--
Yes.
--article. And I certainly applaud everything positive that's happening, and I've been in tears most of the time, actually. But looking ahead to 1314, I am dismayed to see that on the Budget Solutions list, it says, "Item number one, eliminate visual and performing arts program." Please can we quit doing that? It's not a program. It is our music teachers, and it doesn't reflect that in looking at this. So I hope that's going to disappear. Maybe somebody has a big, some kind of eraser that works on that kind of a publication. So I'll see you soon. Have a lovely summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie. Okay. Okay, that concludes the public hearing on that item, and we will now vote. And the budget--
40.
--is in suspense. 4-0, unanimous. All right.
And just to point out, we will be voting on an amended budget sometime in July, which reflects--
We will keep working on this as we get new information, but particularly with the teachers' agreement.
I move item I3.
Item I3, moved, seconded. Please vote. Motion on item I4?
We'll wait again, because it's just--
Oh, excuse me. That was item I3. Okay, wait for the vote on that. Just pause here for a minute, and--
Okay.
Okay, that's I3, passes. And we will, motion on I4?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Please vote, item I4. And now we are to what we had delayed earlier in the meeting, the public hearing.
You need to vote again on that one, you're too fast.
Okay. Okay, that also passes 4-0. We've had a lot of 4-0 votes tonight. Now, the public hearing and approval of the 2012-13 Annual Service and Budget Plans for Local Plan for Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And let me see here, since this is a public hearing on item F1, we do not have any public speakers. You have no others, Ms. Vierato? Okay, so that concludes the public hearing. Any other comments? One comment.
You're out of time.
Okay, it's too late to vote. Okay, if no further comments, please vote. And that passes 4-0. And incredibly, we are now on the last page, which is public participation. We have no other speakers for non-agenda items. We will have no recess, and we will adjourn the meeting, the last meeting of the fiscal year.